At this time, we will reconvene the budget workshop. Tonight, we'll have a discussion on what we've heard for the last three nights as it relates to the existing budget and any of the items that we heard from on Tuesday night. Do you want to go over?
Actually, I've got a couple of things to update you on.
Okay.
There are two, there are two pieces of paper that I laid on you at your desk. The first one is the 1819 Capital Projects List for the school system. I'll give you an update on that. Dr. Phipps put that together. This was their priority. Commissioner Richardson asked what would be their, what would be their projects if they were doing this money. And it's more than what has been allocated in the budget, but what he's saying is where I've got that says Northside Chiller Replacement Number Two, and I've got "hold" written outside it. Their intent is to put that one on hold right now, and hopefully it will last this year, and they would do it next year. But these are the projects. If you take that out, they're below it, but these would be the ones they would have as their priority for their funding. The second one is, is an email from Carney that talks about the fire departments and their request. So the Northside Fire Departments met and said they would like for the board to consider adjusting the fire tax on the north side to a revenue-neutral number. And then Chalkwindity Fire has asked, so that would be Chalkwindity proper and Chalkwindity Fire District, because it includes both inside the city and the outside area, that theirs be adjusted to be revenue-neutral as well. The remaining departments, Richland said, no, they were fine where they were, even though it was down. And then the remaining EMS agencies that was below five cents, they were fine. They wanted to leave it where it was, so not adjust for revenue-neutral on that. Okay? And then I need to make a correction from the comments I made to you the other night on service expansion, on school security. We circled back around on that to make sure we had the numbers right, and it's not seven, it's six. You would need six in the school system, and then one at the community college to put an SRO officer at every school facility. That includes, because right now, there are seven, and they are sharing an officer between a couple of schools. So to do that, to put an officer in every school, and to put an officer at the early college, you would add one to the community college police staff, police force, and then you would need six additional SROs, and that puts one at every facility. And I think, what I told you all the other night was seven. I apologize for that.
And we're putting that on hold until we find out what the state's going to do.
You're doing whatever you want to do with that. I will tell you that today, there was an announcement that came out from the, from the leadership that said they were putting additional money into, for school security, and they were going to add 12 million dollars to SROs. They're also going to add, I think it was a total of 35 million. Ah, somewhere. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Sitting right here on my note in front of me. They were adding 30, they had come to an agreement, you know, the House had said 1.8. They had come to, they announced today, they came to an agreement for school safety, 35 million dollars in total. And of that 35 million dollars in total, 12 million of it would be for SROs. The remainder would be for nurses and counselors and different things like that, some infrastructure. But that's a total of additional 12 million dollars. No, I don't.
Is that for SROs?
That would be for grant money for SROs.
12 million, Sam?
12 million across the entire state.
That's up from 1.8 million.
That's what was originally in the House's proposed budget, 1.8 for the grant program. But that, that just came out this afternoon.
Is this in the short session?
Yes, from my understanding, and again, this was from a conference call we had just a little while ago with the, with the Association County Commissioners, that they are not going through the normal legislative budget update session that they normally do. Typically, they go to a committee, or they get a bill that goes to the committee, and then they talk about it, and it comes back to the floor, and then they do things. They have, they've shortcut, they've shortcut that process in that they're gutting an existing bill, and they're taking the budget that they've adopted, essentially, they've put together themselves, they're sliding that into the bill, and it's going to come up, they think, Monday or Tuesday, and it will be an up or down vote. There's no way to amend it, because it's, they're gut, they've gutted an existing bill, so you won't be able to make amendments on the floor, as I understand it. So it'll be just a straight up or down vote.
So if I'm figuring right, that's $120,000 per county?
If it's distributed evenly.
If it's distributed evenly, right?
Yeah.
But it's not going to be?
It's going to be a grant fund.
Yeah. But if they were splitting it equally, it'd be 120,000.
Right, and we currently pull, we currently draw down some grant money from them for SROs, so I don't know whether they'd look at that and go, well, you know, I don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know. Those are the updates I have for you. Anything that we missed that we, that y'all need?
Anita and Brian and I also have a spreadsheet. And so if you make a recommendation that something be included in the budget, or taken out of the budget, then we'll try to keep up with it to know what the effect is. And the only way I know to do it, if we, if we want to move forward with, with an item, would be to have a straw vote, just to see if it's put in the budget for consideration, because on Monday night, June the 4th, we'll have a budget hearing. So with that, with that said, who wants to, who wants to be first?
Where's the spreadsheet? You said you had a spreadsheet.
It's just on the computer.
It's a blank spreadsheet. Should be, you got a blank spreadsheet, haven't you?
I've, I've got one that I've got numbers on.
Now, the rest of us should have a spreadsheet with numbers on it, too. You know, why have just a few people got a spreadsheet with numbers on it?
I've got, I've got this on it.
Who gave you that?
It was in our book.
It's in our book.
Yeah, but it's marked up. Huh?
It's marked up.
He marked it himself.
Yeah.
Is that your personal marking?
Yes, it is.
Oh, you don't have anything, the rest of us don't have this?
Yes, that's right.
You've got the sheets in the book.
That's right.
Why didn't you say that?
All right. That's been clarified.
Thanks.
Okay. Who wants, who wants to be first?
I'll go first.
All right.
There's a couple of things that I'd like to put in the budget. For BB Memorial Park, I think they came in and asked for 5,000. I recommend that we give them 2,500. And for the Pantego Museum, give them five, extra 500. And also, I would like to see the resource officers at every school. That's all I got.
Just for clarification, that's the PS Jones Alumni Memorial Park. I apologize, we put that in as BB. The PS Jones Alumni.
Okay.
Memorial Park, not BB Park.
That was, that was 25?
2,500, right.
And the Pantego?
500.
So that's $3,000. Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask for clarification on that?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand, the SROs, does that include the community college? Because remember, we broke, we pulled the community college piece out because we wanted all those.
All, all, seven of them.
Okay. So six for the public school system, and then one for the?
Community.
Community college.
Can I, can I just say something? I think we, as far as those SROs is concerned, I don't think there's anybody who's going pretty much to vote again, and I may be wrong, so I think you may as well consider that pretty much a done deal. I think so.
I agree. Six plus one.
I don't agree. I'm going to tell you why I don't agree.
Okay.
Because you haven't put any brain work into how to solve the problem. All we're doing is throwing money at it. Throwing money at it, it's only going to get worse. Nobody would have ever thought, that's anywhere close to my age, that they would live at a time when we needed police officers in schools to begin with. And now, we're adding police officers because somebody got shot down in Florida, or somewhere else. And while you can be sympathetic toward that, there is a lot of ways to solve this problem other than throwing money at it. Because we found out from the Florida experience that some of those SROs are not going to be there when they're needed. Some of them are not going to take a chance of getting shot or killed by somebody. And some of them, if they go after them, are going to kill the SRO first, then they can do whatever they want to. So, you know, I had rather see an intelligent program where we talk to the, where we train, if you will, the officers that are already in the school, and the counselors in the school to recognize risk. And that we also, I don't have a problem with locking certain doors, I don't have a problem with one-way entrances to schools and those sorts of things. But I think when you start putting personnel into this thing, you're, you're creating a problem that's going to be a long-term problem. And believe me, these people are going to find a way to justify their existence. So within a few years, we're going to be back to where we need another SRO in the schools. I'd rather see us throw brain work at it instead of money.
Other, other comments on?
SRO?
School resource officers as it relates to the college?
Well, I'm going to throw brain in it.
And, and the school system?
I'm going to do as Mr. Richardson asked. I'm going to throw brain in it. We need SRO officers.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that. If you look at statistics around the country, in 99 points, probably 99% of the time, 99.9% of the time, the SRO has performed that, to their function. If you look at the one in Maryland, within three minutes, the shooter was dead. And, and you see that happening across the country. So I'm going to insist that, or not insist, but I'm going to vote for SROs in every school. We have them now in six schools, why shouldn't we have them in all schools? And it's a very successful program. Yes, it's a shame that we have to do that, that's the time that we're living in.
And I would love to see them there all day, when there's, all day long. I would love to see them there all day long.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Brand.
The reason that I'm interested in this program is, we've had 11 school shootings this year. And there would have been a higher kill total out in, in Texas if that school resource officer hadn't have been there and fought him off. That gunfight lasted 25 minutes between those resource officers and the guy, and the shooter. And if they hadn't been for that resource officer, you would have had a high number of children that were shot and killed. So I think it's important to, because we wouldn't have to have one shooting in Beaufort County, and they look at us and say, well, why haven't you done something? You knew this could happen, why haven't you done it? Well, I want to be ahead of the curve.
And Mr. Chairman, even the Washington paper, situation in Washington High School, the SRO played a tremendous role in that function. And it could have turned out much differently.
Well, you know, you can always arm teachers. Allow those that want to be armed to be armed.
I don't know if we should start that discussion, because you're going to have untrained people running around with guns.
Well, that's your opinion.
That's a law enforcement opinion. And I spent 23 years in law enforcement.
I don't care if you did. I'm a citizen, I outrank you. Citizens outrank you.
No, we're all equal.
No, no.
I have to tell you that.
No, you're, you're trying to pull rank, and I'm telling you, citizens outrank you.
Okay, Edie.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think the key is, it's a bad situation. The attempt that we can make at having trained officers out there, and knowing how to handle a situation like that, is the way we need to go at, at this time. And I think it should be in all the schools, and I agree with, we definitely need that extra officer at the community college, and for those students out there in the early college program.
Any other comments?
And I just want to say this, I just feel that it's really sad that we have to have this conversation, when, when during my, my growing up, I mean, you basically went to school and you did what you did, you had a good time, and you came home, and you, you never really worried about anybody coming into the school with a firearm, but times have changed. And so therefore, we, we have to change with the times. We have to make the necessary adjustments. I mean, who would want to, to look apparent in the face and say, a child was, was killed today, and there was something we could have done, but we did not do? And I'm not saying that when you put these resource officers in the school, that that's going to fix everything. But for me, it's a preventive measure, that, that we're trying to effect a change. And even, even though Commissioner Richardson said that the SRO will be the first one they come for, well, I was a deputy for 14 years. You're used to people coming for you. It's kind of like the, the, the commercial that the Army does. It has all this trouble this way, people running this way, but the soldiers are running to it. And that's basically what you will have with an SRO, is everybody else fleeing, but the SRO running to the problem, because that's what they get paid to do. So that's why I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this. I'm, I'm in full support of this, because I, I would just hate for, for something bad to happen to anybody's child. And that's just the way I feel.
Mr. Chairman, could we get Charlie to speak on that for just a minute? Do you, do you have any comments?
Charlie.
What kind of training, can you let us know what kind of training the, the resource officers go through to become best sirs?
Sure. All of our resource officers are sworn law enforcement officers, so they go through the, the same mandated training that any law enforcement officer would have. Where our resource officers go over the top of that is that they, we send them to specific training for school resource officers and officers that are going to be in the school setting. Because there's a lot of different rules and regulations and laws that go along with the expectations of privacy and things like that that go along in the schools. They, also, we spend a little bit more time with, with those school resource officers in dealing with rapid deployment responses for incidents that could occur in the schools. And then, you know, an element that, that we have tried to instill at the sheriff's office when it comes to our resource officer program, is that it's more than just the school. And it's more than just that the times where school is in session, is that they're a vital piece of the law enforcement puzzle when it comes to intelligence that comes from the schools, comes from the students, when it involves investigations that go on, not just in the school, but outside of it. The example that she gave about the, the case from Washington High School, that started out with a crime that actually occurred away from school. And the information led us to possible suspects at the school, and then working with the school staff at Washington High School, and some of the things that they noticed was brought to the attention of the SRO that was there that led to finding the firearm in the school. So if any one of those pieces was not there, then it's a different story at the end of the day. And that, that's just a, one example of many that I can give about how the program has grown over the years and what we look to move in the future. I mean, without a doubt, I think that the schools have a really good idea about some of the improvements that they need to make on a structural, on an infrastructure basis. But when it comes from the opinion of the sheriff and the sheriff's offices, is that we, we need to have people power, the most important resource that we have. And so I have no doubt that the sheriff would, would applaud any, any movement in trying to get a deputy in each of the schools.
Mr. Evans?
I agree. Let's let the teachers teach, and let these resource officers protect our children and grandchildren. That's what they're trained to do.
Yes, sir. Did you, did you have any?
I'm good. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments before we do a straw vote on resource, school resource officers? Okay? If you will, raise your right hand if you're in favor of the school resource officers at each one of the schools? Those opposed? All right, now, Commissioner Brand, you mentioned two other items. Anybody else want to say anything about either one of those before we do a straw vote? Would take the Pantego Academy first. Your recommendation was 500?
Yes.
Those who are in favor of the additional money for the Pantego Academy, raise your right hand? Those opposed? Okay, any, any comments on the, make sure I get it right, because I, I did not on Tuesday night. The PS Jones Memorial Park?
I would, I understand what Commissioner Brand put out there. It's, it's a nice park, and it's going to be tied in with the Boys and Girls Club. I would, I would say grant them their requests.
You say what?
Grant them their requests.
For 5,000?
Let me make sure I'm correct on this. In, in the, in their discussion, that I understand they've already received a $200,000 grant.
It's been a considerable amount. I don't know what it is. I don't go to those meetings, but I pass it every day, and I see the work that's being done over there, and I know that it's going to tie, they're going to tie that to the Boys and Girls Club.
I guess what I'm making is, is that, you know, we've, we've done grants before when somebody else was coming into the county, or somebody within the county, if it was a corporate taxpayer. We've, we've done 5% or 10% of the total project.
Well, if it's $200,000, that you're saying, 5% of that project would be what?
10.
And that's, well, I would go as much as 5.
And, and the things that we do at the industrial park, normally, we, we, don't we do 5%?
It kind of, it depends on what the match is for the grant.
Any other comments? All right.
Well, I think it's kind of hard to mix the policy that we have on industry coming into the county, where the state is giving a grant, and we're participating in that grant project with charity, with a handout. They're two different things. This is two different things. They can't be compared.
Well, we, we just did something for the 4-H Foundation in the county, where Tri-City Broadband gave 7,500, I believe was the number, and we matched that. We matched it.
I'm talking about charity. That's what this is, a charity process.
Well, it depends on what you call charity. I, I don't consider this to be charity. I mean, they went through the grant process to get $200,000 from the Kate Reynolds Foundation.
A charitable foundation. So it must be charity.
Okay. Edie, any other comments? All right. Those in favor of doing 5,000, raise your right hand. Who wants to be next?
I'll go next. I'd like us to consider the pay and classification study implementation. I don't think it's been done in the county before. It would bring us into, you know, similar to other counties in the area, it would be good for our employees. And the other part of that is the pay and classification study implementation, which would formalize the process for evaluations throughout with the county employees. So those, those are the two. And then the other one I have is the open door community center. I'd like to see us consider $5,000 for that.
You want, you want to repeat all of those again?
The pay study, pay and classification study implementation. On a two-year phase, a phase two, it'll be done over two years.
So how much money is that?
It's about?
It's 553,000. If you look on page 171, you'll see, see the number.
I'm just trying to get it in the record.
And it'd be done over two years, though?
Yes, that's phase one.
Yeah, phase one.
What's phase two called?
Same time.
And then the other one would be the employee performance evaluation study, which would be 40,000, which would formalize the evaluation process in the county.
So you included the portion to start the implementation?
Excuse me?
You included the portion to start implementing it?
The, it would be implemented over a two-year period, in the pay classification and the raises, and the employee performance evaluation would be a one-time expense of 40,000, if it's not the program, the evaluation.
But with the, with the implementation, that, that would begin with the low folk on the totem pole. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, as a county manager.
The performance, remember when she came in and did the, the review for you, and did the study? They gave you three options on how you implement that. The first option was to take, and to spread it over two years, the first piece would be to move all of the employees into the appropriate class, make sure I say this right, into the appropriate class, because she redid the classes based on the market study, to bring, to bring every employee into the correct class at the minimum. And then, right? If they were moving into a new class, at the minimum. And then, it was a half a percent?
Yes.
For the number of years in the current position to help start to address the compression issue. And then, in the second phase, it would?
Bring 5% above the minimum.
Bring them to 5% above the minimum, and then there'd be another adjustment based on the number of years in grade.
Right.
So it was, it was phasing it in over two years. You know, the initial piece was to say, do it all at once, and the board came back and said, show us a two-year plan. So that was her recommendation on that.
And the cost on that is how much?
The first, the first piece is roughly 553, and then the second piece would be roughly 553.
So 553, that's a penny.
It is.
Penny in a penny.
Because that would have to be recurring revenue. That could not be one time.
But the 40,000 would not be recurring revenue.
The, the performance piece was, her recommendation on that was to institute the performance piece. We feel like we can handle the performance piece in-house for any adjustments based on what we can do internally. But this was, would be a one-time to implement the software that we would use and, and to train our folks on using that, have someone come in and write that policy, and we're familiar with the software, we used it before.
That's the piece about merit pay.
Sir?
That's the piece about merit pay.
Yes, sir. Performance. Yes, sir.
I got you.
But there's nothing proposed to actually give the merit pay. So would you do that, the 40,000 this year, and start merit next year?
That would, well, because it would take us a year. It would take us, first of all, it would take us a while to get the, because in the software, you go in and you enter all the job performance characteristics, you look at the percentages, and, and all the things specific to each job. So that takes a little bit of time to get in. Then we have to train everybody on how to use that. Supervisors have to be trained on it, the employees have to be trained on it, because under that software, the employee does their own evaluation. The supervisor does an evaluation, and then they cross, and then you meet, and you talk about that, and then you come, the supervisor comes to a final evaluation. So all of that's got to be trained, and then- And then we've got to start the evaluation process. So you've got to go in and set the minimums and say, here's what's expected of you, and go through it. So then it's another year to get through that.
You're just computerizing the process that's been done, used in industry for the last 80 years.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's all it is.
And the reason you're doing that is so that you can look at trends and make sure that people aren't gaming the system. Because if you take a piece of paper, you're unable to watch those trends and see those kind of things without a lot of extra work. And it's a...Anita and I both have used that software. It's really good. It works really well. And you've got to put a good plan in place if you're going to do that. You can't just wing it. But it would be two years. It would be two years before we would look to implement performance adjustments. Because it would take us that long to get through that process.
But the two go hand in hand? Basically.
It was part of what was recommended by the consultant.
By the consultant.
There was the market piece. I mean, there were three things that were actually recommended by her. There was the market piece. There was the performance piece to deal with compression and help separate out your high performers from your regular performers. And then there was the longevity piece that said, you want to look at that if you can. And then there was also, you know, COLAs if they're available. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your number on Open Door.
5,000.
And would that be considered a one-time or recurring?
No, it's not a recurring.
Okay, let's take the first one, which is the pay and classification study implementation. And this would be Phase One of Two. And this is a study that was completed in April of 2017. And the estimated cost the first year is 553,727. Any other discussion on that before we do a straw vote?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did that study that was done, I looked at some of it. Did it show that our employees as a whole were underpaid compared to other areas?
It looked at what the market was for our peers. Remember, they brought you a list of names of counties and cities that they considered our peers, and they looked at those to determine where we ranked based on those, the average of those. And it did show. That's why her numbers were to adjust up to meet that market. So yes. Short answer, yes, sir.
We currently have a turnover rate of about 12%, 13%?
So what you're saying is, is our employees are not...are doing the same job for less money than other counties' employees?
Not all employees. Not all employees. But you do have some that are well...I mean, it's a gamut. I mean, we have some employees that are well below market, no doubt, well below market. We have some that are below market. We have some that are at, and some that are a little above market. Those at or a little above wouldn't be impacted by this.
Do you have a percentage of underpaid that you can share with us?
Not off the top of my head.
Yeah, half a million dollar worth.
Yeah.
I don't know how many it is, but it's a half a million dollar worth on the pay.
Oh, yeah, it's 1.2. Why is it twice that?
Huh?
Actually, it's twice.
Yeah. I mean, it's for one year. I mean, that's for the first year implementation and the second year.
Yeah, it's a total...
So it's a million dollars. So it's actually...
About 1.2.
Yeah, 1.2 million dollar worth on it. Yeah.
Well, our biggest turnover is in the Sheriff's Department and EMS.
Actually, your absolute largest turnover is in the Animal Control Department.
Animal Control.
Dogs biting.
I think we shared with you all the other day.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that one's just extraordinary, because that is a very, very...it's extremely difficult job.
Well, you got a slave driver. What do you expect?
Yes. Animal Control is 80%. But here again, when you start getting down to smaller numbers, if you have four in the department and two leads, it's a 50% turnover.
That's right.
Any other comments or questions?
So this is, if we implement this, we already know that that's going to raise taxes a penny just to implement this program this year and a penny next year. Is that correct?
Unless we have, you know, some unexpected growth.
Yeah, we're going to have that, I imagine.
Unexpected growth.
I'm sorry, do it.
His comment was, you're not committing next year's board.
You are not able to bind a future board.
But it is...we are taking the approach, you either can do it all in one year or you can phase it in over a two-year period.
Yes, sir. That was what the recommendation... And in fact, the consultant said that was probably the best way to do it. And the board said at the retreat, bring us back a two-year program. That being said, if this board implements the first phase of it, it doesn't guarantee that the next year's board is going to implement the second phase of it. You just have to assume that they would do that, or you could request that that happened. But you can't bind the future board to that second piece. That would have to come next year.
Look, I got another question. Now, the one that you're doing now is the lowest of the lowest, you said?
No, actually, it would take...it would take all of the employees that were out of class and move them up to where they should be. So it would catch all of them. It just would not adjust as much as she's recommending in the second phase to deal with the compression issues that's in the...
So on the first phase, everybody will get a bump except for them that's already above the minimum and the max?
Yes, yes.
Now, how many employees out of the 377 do we have that is above the max?
Not above the max. We don't have anybody that's above the max.
How about the minimum?
Your mind, how many people would we have that would not be impacted by this thing?
I'd have to look at the spreadsheet and calculate that, which I can do. It'll just take me a few minutes.
Any other discussion? Just for the public record, this was done last year, and we had some discussion and decided not to move forward with it last year.
Yes, sir. The reason...
Because of the time and budget process.
Exactly. Last year, it wasn't completed in time to hit the budget process. Ms. Vezie wasn't able to get it completed, and it just took a little bit longer in the study. So we weren't able to do that, and the board said, let's wait. Let's look at it next year, which is this year.
I've got one more question. This is giving me heartburn. Now, if we implement this program, and you're going to just get the low hanging fruit, we call it, do the other employees don't get any raise this year at all?
But, well, anybody who is already at market or above market would not get an adjustment. They would get...there would be an adjustment for folks that in grade.
That's what bothers me.
Yeah, no, not everybody's going to be touched by it in the first year. And folks that are above or at market or above would not. Because this is simply trying to get those who are below market to where they need to be equal with what they should be with other, and then work on the compression issue.
This doesn't have anything to do with the COLA.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's correct. This is completely separate than that. Yes, sir. But a COLA will not address the grade issues or the compression issues. It just advances it up one.
Thank you, Mr. J.
Well, because this is a workshop, and we're just trying to get through and come up with a number. So I think the best way is to say, we can take the straw vote and vote for it upper down. And then when we get to the end and we get a number, we still could come back and make adjustments. Is that fair enough?
Fair enough.
In other words, it's not a done deal, I guess, is what I wanted to say.
Right.
That's fair.
Fair enough?
Hell, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to hear the numbers.
All right. Do you want to take a straw vote on the Open Door? Okay. Let's take a straw vote. Or any comments on Open?
What was the...
Just that it services females and women.
Homeless.
Homeless. 5,000?
5,000. Now, based on conversation that I had with Brian, I'm assuming that their biggest cost is this first year when they try to update and refit the building?
Correct. Dawn's back there shaking her head, yes. She represents that organization.
Biggest cash need. After that, there are some operational programs that will help with operational money. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead with your...
Okay, let's go ahead and take the straw. This is for 5,000 on Open Door. Community Center. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, Anita?
So it looks like about 39% of our employees will not see an increase in Phase One. And the rest will. 61% will.
And that's because that group
They're already...
Is already at or above.
I've got to get in line for everybody.
So we reached out to the consultant and asked her the best way to implement this if we wanted to do like a two-year phase in. Because initially, if you'll remember, we had a...we had three options. We had a good, a better, and a best. And, you know, the best was the Cadillac, and it was expensive. And so we were going to do the middle option for the employees and phase it in over two years. Now, the problem with that, or the potential problem with that, is that if you bring up the lowest of the low employees and do the middle implementation Phase One of that, and then you get a board later that doesn't want to do Phase Two, you could potentially have a lot of upset employees.
You have that anyway.
What she suggested was that we do the third option, which essentially changes the pay plan and puts all the new grades in place. And it puts everybody at least to 2.5% above the minimum of that new pay grade. And they get a 1.5% increase in their salary for every year that they've been in their current position. So that's Phase One. Now, in Phase Two, we would catch the rest of the folks by catching anybody who has been in their current position, and they'd get 1%. I said 1.5. I meant a half a percent for every year in their position. They get a half a percent increase for every year in their position under Option Three. And then in the second year, they'd get the other half a percent for a total of 1%.
So what is the number for that?
I'd have to count.
You're talking about the additional employees?
Yeah, what she was talking about, the option.
That next option?
It's the option she's talking about.
Is another 570, 553.
That was a million dollars?
So it's a million dollars the first year? Still over two years.
Still over two years, getting to that middle option.
So I think in rough numbers, you could say, let's round to 40%. 40% would be left out in the first year. Now, I'd have to calculate to see how many of that 40% we would catch up, because some people won't even get a raise in Phase Two.
Now, you're talking about helping morale.
Well, but that's because they're already...I mean, and this is not...this is not about... This is not about giving something to everybody. Or this is about this adjustment in looking at what you asked the consultant to look at was to get your pay plan fixed and to address the years of issues with compression. And so employees that are already at market or above market, they're where they should be. People who are below should be brought up. So, you know, the question is, if I'm above the market, am I going to be mad because I didn't get something? You really shouldn't be.
Well, it's mainly new hires. It's going to be the new hires, because what we're catching up for are the folks that have been here and not been allowed to move up within the pay class.
Since you're looking at me, I answer back. No, you shouldn't be mad, but human nature, you are going to be mad. Now, anybody that...anybody that can't see through that, something is wrong with them.
This is not a COLA. I mean, you still got your COLA that you can give everybody a raise if you want to.
Wait a minute, then I listen at you. I understand what you are saying. But the thing that I was looking at is, if you do this for 30% or 60%, what about the other 40? What happens with them?
We're going to catch...
They don't get anything.
No, no, we're going to catch most of it next year. But there are going to be a very... You...that...I'm one of those people. I'll go ahead and tell you.
You have dogs. I understand. You have dogs.
It is. It's more of your director-level positions, it is, that won't see an increase. But...
Yeah, I understand. And I mean, I agree with you. I'm not arguing with you. I understand.
If I understand correctly, it's been roughly 10 years since we had a market analysis of where our employees were in the marketplace compared to the surrounding areas. And when the study was done, you correct me if I say this, because I don't have it in front of me, we used counties that were comparable. We didn't go look at Raleigh or Charlotte area.
They looked at areas where we were...that were considered our peers and that we were in competition with. So that we wouldn't...so that we would be able to retain employees and not lose them to counties that are our peers. Because we are somewhere below.
You're talking about counties that surround us?
Some...yes, the majority of them. I think we did not include... I can grab the study and tell you what counties we used. You know, I think we didn't use like Washington County.
Mr. Jerm, I got one quick question.
Yes.
Do you remember what we paid to have that study done?
I think it was 30,000.
30,000.
Okay. All right. Don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, let's take a straw vote. All those in favor of moving forward with the pay and classification implementation, Phase One of Two, with the cost being 553,727, estimated cost? Raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, your next one was the employee performance evaluation.
Performance, yes. Management and valuation system.
Now, you're going to lose me there.
Me too.
Me too.
Go ahead. I say you're going to lose me there. I don't play golf with them.
It's true. Well... I mean, I've participated, and I've been evaluated in previous times. And I think, I think the safeguard is that you always can have somebody above take a look at the review to make sure that there is fairness, if there's questions in that. I'm not, I'm, I've never liked the idea of giving everybody the same amount of money for the same position. I think that, I think that when you perform and you do well, and that you should be recognized for it. And if you don't perform well, then you don't get the pay increase. And very quietly, hopefully, they look for a different job.
Mr. Chairman, I, with, in my company, we use a similar system. And in order to evaluate the employees, the paper system just doesn't work. And also with the other companies that I've worked for, we always use an electronic evaluation system. It's the fairest system I've seen in, in my career.
Good God.
Paper doesn't work.
Yeah, I think we, we've talked to the board about this a couple of times. And, and from a management perspective, giving managers the opportunity to evaluate their personnel and to set expectations and there, and to allow there to be rewards related to those expectations helps separate out high performers from mediocre performers. Now, what you may say is, well, then you just need to fire those folks. If you come to work and you do your job, then you get paid what you get paid, and that's what you get paid for. And if you don't do those things, you ought to be fired. You're right. There's progressive disciplinary actions to say, these are the things that occur. But the employee that goes above and beyond, and I'm, and we're not talking about a, a, I, I think out of this whole thing, out of eighteen million dollar payroll, I think we estimated about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is what we were talking about. Is that right? For those employees that go above and beyond, you're either gonna reward them and keep them, or you're gonna lose them. And, and that is human nature. If, you know, you can only tell somebody thank you so much, and you're doing a great job, and appreciate what you're doing, and buy them a drink for so, for, for so long, until they say, well, you know, I can go next door where they do have an evaluation system, and I can be rewarded for the good work that I do. And, and so, you know, I, I understand and, and not.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I understand, I, I understand, Commissioner Booth, I, I used to work for the state of North Carolina too. And, and I, and, and the consultant will tell you, the state of North Carolina's evaluation system is the worst system there was. And, and I would agree with that. But there's gotta be, but, but she also told you all that there really should be a way to, to separate out high performing employees and reward those employees, and for there to be checks and balances in place. And, and you know, there was a comment made about the next level looking up. And yes, there's a review, and there's an ability to look at those trends and to make sure that they're doing the right thing, so. From, from a management's perspective, we think it's a good thing. I know you, you are the policymakers, and you're the ones that are gonna tell us whether we're gonna do it or not. But from a, from a management perspective, being able to do that, I think, is a good thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think an expectation out of some employees, that just because I do what my job description says, I'm an excellent employee, and what we're looking for is that employee that goes above what their job description calls for. And then you have to have some way to reward them for doing that.
I think it, I think it gives you that opportunity when you're, when you're sitting down with the employee and doing it, in the discussion to really be very honest about where they're weak, and maybe something that they need to do to correct that. I mean, it may mean to go to Beaufort Community College and take a course. In financial management, I'm just using that as an illustration.
It, it is not an easy process. And, and the reason, the reason performance evaluations fail is because they're not managed correctly. And they're, because there's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and there's a lot of review. And if you just throw it in and say, you know, write it up, folks will game the system, and they'll reward their buddies, and they'll do what they want to do. And if somebody's not watching, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. But if somebody's not watching that, then they will do that. And that's why those systems fail. And what I'm saying to you is, being able to watch it and look at it and evaluate it gives you the opportunity to catch those things and make sure that it doesn't fail, and to do the right thing by your employees. Because they are your, they are your greatest capital asset. I mean, they, they, your human capital is the greatest asset you have. Without, without employees, you know, we, equipment doesn't move, and services don't get rendered. So, we need to look after our employees.
I'm looking, okay. All right, we'll take a straw vote on the employee performance evaluation study. And the estimated cost on that is forty thousand dollars. All those in favor moving forward, raise your right hand. Those opposed? That fails.
Somebody else feel like I do then, though.
Okay. Did you, you had one more, didn't you?
There's three for now.
Had three, okay. All right. Who wants, who wants to be next?
I got a couple. First of all, I've always been one to advocate for a cola for the employees. And this year, I'm gonna bite the bullet and say, we can't do it. I mean, because I really understand that. But what I am hoping that you will go along with me with is to say a one-time payment.
Bonus.
Bonus, we'll call it, yeah, bonus, bonus payment. And, and I'm not, I'm not locked in on a number, but I, I think it should be something, uh, something reasonable. So, I'll, I'll listen to anything anybody has to say, but I, I think that's, I mean, because that's something that's not reoccurring. I mean, this is just a, a, a one-time payment, and I'm flexible. I'll listen to my fellow commissioners.
Well, since you brought it up, put a number on the table, and then it'll be easier to react.
Well, I, I'll say one thousand dollars.
So, I'm gonna do that calculation. And we'll give you what the total number is.
Well, it's gonna be a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah. Benefits, all the benefit stuff, you gotta add to that.
Oh, you're talking about a cash payment?
One time.
Then you gotta do about, what, fifteen percent or more, twenty percent?
Seventeen and a half.
How many, how many employees would that affect?
Every employee. At least that's what I thought I heard.
And how many would, how many would that be, is what I'm asking?
Three hundred and seventy-seven.
Three hundred and seventy-seven.
Not ten and seven thousand.
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
That's going up.
So, it's three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Well, that would be the board's, if, if you wanted to do that, there's another piece of that. Is that, is that for, is that for current employees? You said you want to put six SROs in, and so.
No, not then.
Okay, that's just what I want, because the question, the question I hear came.
You get hired, you lie and get a thousand dollar bonus? No. No.
Become a guy.
Hardly don't get it either.
And I, and I'm, I'm understanding exactly what y'all are doing over there. And, and I'm gonna say this, I'm just saying the number is one thousand dollars, and, and whatever you need to deduct from that, you just deduct from that, but that's the number.
It's about four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
That would, that would provide a thousand dollars. When it's all said and done, what you're saying is you want the employee to walk out with a thousand dollars?
No.
No.
That's what he gets after tax.
Okay. All right, it's still four forty-three. I'm sorry, still four forty-three. Because the county has their percentage, they have to pay for FICA and for retirement, and then, so it wouldn't be, it would not be walk out with a thousand, it'd be less than that.
Well, let me, let me ask you this way, because if that's four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, if you fully implemented the, the, the other program, will everybody be affected that way?
Which other program?
With their.
Part one and two.
The cola, you mean, the percentage increase.
Yeah. The second phase of performance.
Yeah.
Tried to argue that one in on you there, Commissioner Booth. The second.
I already told you, I'm not in there.
I already told you, you high dollar too.
The second piece of the paying class is, is five fifty-three. So, you're what?
Yeah, but it needs to be a recurring.
That's right, it's gotta be a recurring number. That's the difference. That's the difference in a one-time, what you've initially said, and then this second phase is recurring.
I got you.
I like that better. Well, let's, let's, let's look at it at the full implementation. And then when we, when we finish this thing, and we see where we are on the tax rate, I might repent real quick.
Okay.
What are we looking at, four forty, or?
Phase one and two.
Full implementation is two pennies.
Five fifty-three plus five fifty-three. So, you add five fifty-three for Langley.
Can you count?
Just got bumped up, Langley.
Okay. And my last thing is, this is, this is for Christina. I see you got your head in your lap, though. You, you, you talked about a, a person to, to look over this twenty-five million dollars. But my question to you is, can't that person do that job for less than sixty-five thousand dollars and not have a vehicle, a computer, and a cellphone?
How mercy, Jesus.
I'll take that. Yes and no.
That's a good answer.
I would say a, a full-time position cannot do that job without a vehicle, computer, and cellphone. I would say a contract position cannot do that job without a computer and cellphone, because I don't believe there's anyone, honestly, that works for the county now that can do their job without a computer and a cellphone. Certainly not managing a half million dollars worth of capital projects. Someone used the word conceded earlier, and I don't really want to use, to be conceded or to concede the position, because I did request the position, therefore, I believe that the position is needed. But I will say that I do understand the position that you gentlemen are in. Bearing that in mind, obviously, still a half million dollars worth of projects that are currently going on. I currently, after speaking with you earlier this week, went back and listed out, you know, the multiple projects, and you know, eighteen total projects that are, could be going on in the next, next six months. So, again, trying to be good stewards of the people's money and the projects, you, you need to know what's going on. In lieu of the full-time position, I believe it can be done for less than that. I believe if, if allowed, if given money for a contract position for, to, based upon expenditures this current year, I, I would say the answer for that would be yes and no. I believe it can be done for less than the, the total expansion, which was ninety-five thousand.
Because I, and then this is just Langley speaking. I understand exactly what you're saying, and I want to help you, but I cannot help you with ninety-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's just, but if.
I'll take that job.
But if, if, if there's a way.
It includes a car.
I drive my own car for ninety-five thousand.
Drive your own, okay. I understand, and again, that, that was a, a position of, a, a person of a position and of the knowledge and of the education to have decision-making capabilities to not spend money.
Well, that's me then.
To not have to come before you, Commissioner Booth, and present a change order. That's the point. I would rather bring a position to you, expend the funds for that, than to bring a change order to you.
I'd rather for you to need one.
Well, that's, unfortunately, that doesn't happen.
My thoughts are this, is, is, this is, this is, this is a lot of money. I don't, I don't want us to, to end up with, and not saying it would be intentional, but I'd just say, any form of mismanagement and it, and it costs us later on down the road. That, that is my concern, and, and that's, that's why I ask, could this be done for less money? You say a contract employee could do that. But if you had a contract employee, what kind of number?
I would say half of the ninety-five, because that would take away the vehicle. Take away the vehicle, and it'll take away the benefits portion. Does the bene, does that sound, Anita, benefits?
I disagree. When you get down into that level for what you want, you're not gonna get very much.
I, I, I manage to, to the numbers that are given to me, so I would have to decrease the hour, hours and that type of thing.
Actually, I think we're, we're very fortunate right now with, with the employee that we're, have engaged with us on that. And I think that if we're able to provide some additional funding for that, we, we should be able to continue that. Is that not correct?
If, if, if given half of that, I would man, I mean, I would manage the work to the funds available. I mean, it, it, a contract position is an hourly position. Therefore, the amount of money that you give to me or the number of hours that I would be able to, to have services rendered.
So, what, so what you're saying is for?
There was thirty, I, I don't have my book in front of me, but I believe the vehicle and computer was thirty thousand.
Yes.
So, taking the vehicle is probably an average cost of twenty-five, and the additional would be equipment.
Are you?
Were you saying?
I would say half, half of ninety-five is what I said. So, that's what, forty-seven to fifty?
It's probably fifty.
Fifty.
What would a contractor be per hour?
It depends on the, the skill set, and I mean, again, the.
I mean, I, I don't understand you saying a, a contract employee, but even in a contract, well, how many hours would you say?
Contract or part-time, I mean, it would basically would equate. Currently, I have someone working twenty hours a week, but that's at a reduced rate. So, it depends on the project. Again, these are to manage projects. So, there's some times that projects are running that the person may work forty hours a week. Then there may be a lull when you're in between projects, where they may work twenty hours a week. And I, I would manage to the, to the cost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any way that NC State would have an interim program that could come down? Engineering?
I would, no, sorry.
Would it be too much difference to make up? Would it be too much babysitting, or?
There would not be the knowledge level I think that would be needed. I would hate to turn. And, and I was an NC State engineering student, so I, I'm turning a twenty-year-old or twenty-one, twenty-two-year-old loose to manage a two-million-dollar project with contractors, I definitely not do that.
All right, so the, so the number is?
Fifty thousand.
That's, that's what I'm proposing.
Okay. My, my, my thought on the process is that I would, I would really like to see us consider having a person that would manage the two enterprise funds that we have, solid waste and water, versus having an assistant in the position. I mean, to me, with the, with the funds, enterprise that we have already set up for water with thirteen thousand consumers, is that, that's a better, that's a better way to, to handle an additional personnel, employee at that level. Because that's funded by those two enterprises. Because that's funded by those two enterprises versus adding the second one and be funded by the tax base.
This position, the fifty thousand, if this is contract, a portion of that salary could be paid by the enterprise fund, the solid waste fund.
You, you would want to, you would want to allocate your funds appropriately based on what work they were doing. Whether it was enterprise, time, yeah, time spent. Because otherwise, you're, you're subsidizing one with the other, which is what we tried to get away from.
Well, most of the construction is going on in the water department with the grant and loans that we've got.
There is, but that is. There's work going on with that, but those projects are being managed through the water department. That's more of a time-consuming, for me, I guess, where I'm unable to commit to other things in the maintenance department. What was presented to you was more solid waste and the discussion about capital improvements to the buildings. So that fifty thousand, I would anticipate that being split between solid waste and the, the building maintenance funds. And again, that's based upon allocation of funds for capital improvements. So if this, that fifty thousand could be a one-time expense, not a reoccurring expense, based upon, based upon setting aside funds to do capital improvements. If you're not doing capital improvements one year, then you don't need the additional staff to manage the projects.
So we're gonna take the fifty and we're gonna, if half of that time is spent over in the water, we're gonna charge an administrative charge, so half of that fifty would?
I would not anticipate a lot of that person's time being in the water department.
Or solid waste, either one.
I would solid waste. If, if we're, if we do the capital improvements that have been discussed regarding the convenience sites and, and reworking things in the solid waste fund. Again, this, this position would be needed for that.
Okay. Any other comment before we?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment on that. I mean, we haven't, you, you haven't touched yet, because we haven't, we haven't talked about enterprise funds yet. You haven't talked about the solid waste study that we proposed to you.
That's my next one.
Yeah. I mean, we hadn't talked about that yet, so, right now, and that would, that would be in the works next year if you approved it. And we probably wouldn't get anything until later in the year, or maybe the next fiscal year. What we're, what we are engaged in right now are some projects that are fixing stuff here. So a, a funding to do that under part-time or contract would, would, would do that. And then you could look later at the end on whether that would be picked up.
Well, you're talking about a present need and a, and a future need.
Well, what I'm concerned about is, and I've heard y'all say it, is that, and I'm concerned about it as well. I don't want to have a, an additional staff person and then us not have projects. And all of a sudden, we've got somebody sitting there who, we either have them doing something else that they weren't hired to do, or we have to say, thank you, see you, and then we pay unemployment on them. I mean, that's why having a part-time employee or a contract employee works better for us, because we can scale up or scale down based on project needs.
Okay.
And that's why this would be the one-time expenditure, not a reoccurring.
If there's no other comments, we'll take a straw vote on that, so.
Y'all lost me again.
We're, we're talking about a project manager on a contract basis with a budget number of fifty thousand in lieu of the original request for ninety-five, ninety-five for one, one full-time employee. All right, all those in favor of that, raise your right hand? Those opposed? Okay.
Anita.
Yes, sir.
Just tell them, yeah.
Yes.
Anita, where do we stand dollar-wise right now on expansion budget? It's out of control. It pays.
I got one million eight.
Additional one million eight forty.
Expansion.
What?
One million eight forty.
Expansion.
Yeah, now what, you, you switched, did you switch and do the full ma, for the implementation?
I did.
I, I did on mine. We, we, maybe we need to take a straw vote on that. The, the difference a while ago was so close that we had a little bit sidebar discussion about having the implementation for the salary study in one year. And that number was one million, one hundred and seven thousand, four fifty-four. Is it okay if we vote, take a straw vote on that?
Which one?
In, in lieu of the?
If they, just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
So that means everybody gets some money?
Well, not everybody.
Except for, except for Anita. She, she's all right. She's.
Okay.
Well, you know, I, I don't understand why you don't want to look after the employees that are obviously underpaid, because that's what that five hundred and fifty-three thousand does. It takes care of people that are obviously underpaid to begin with. But you want to give a cola and be nice to everybody. The people that are already at the top, they're gonna get their percentage, which they don't need. I mean, what are you, you ask yourself, what are you trying to do? You trying to be a nice guy and win an election, or are you trying to fix the pay plan?
I, I think we need to fix the pay plan. You know, we, it, it was done in April of two thousand and seventeen, and, and so, you know, we're ten, eleven months that we, you know, we've been kind of out of line. And I think that we need to bite the bullet and go ahead and move versus doing it over a two-year period, taking the chance that phase two of two would, would not be passed in the next budget cycle. Okay. Here again, you know, we can come back, once we get the figure, we can come back and, you'll take it away.
Does that one point eight million, does, does that include both years?
Yes.
Of the, for the pay study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, all those.
What are we voting on?
This is to implement the pay study in one year instead of two, two phases. And that number is one million, one hundred and seven thousand. So let's take a straw vote. All those in favor of doing it in one year, raise your right hand. Okay? Those opposed? Okay. There's nothing binding. Y'all, y'all smile. There's nothing, you ever got a binding.
And my, my last one.
Yeah.
My last one is, is for the solid waste study.
Well, solid waste study, would we not handle that in the enterprise?
Yeah, sure. If you, if we can get through the general, yeah, sure, that, that would help us.
Just remember, come back and think. Okay?
Well, I'm done unless I think of something else.
Well, you can't leave yet.
I can't.
You gotta contribute to the rest of it. Okay.
I'm all right. I'm fine.
Okay. We, we had a request for the tax assessor to get a new car at twenty thousand, and I would like for us to consider that. The emergency service command trailer, which is what we use.
Actually, that's not a command trailer. That, that service expansion was for a, a piece of.
It's, it's inside the command.
It's for, it's for a piece of equipment that allows us to, to combine radio systems so they can have interoperability between multiple radio systems.
That number was eleven thousand, nine hundred. And my thoughts, you know, we had a lot of discussion about the detention center. Is it because that still is a little bit unknown? I, I think that we might just want to wait on that. And then in October or November, if we see that that's proceeding and we don't have to implement it, then we're home free.
Well, no, I, I mean, I understand your, I understand where you're coming from, and, and that is, and I would say to you that, that may be a good strategy if you're waiting on the General Assembly to make a decision about whether they're gonna do something. There's still a lot of debate going on about it. My understanding from, from Lieutenant Brian, who sits on that committee, is that it's going to happen. The rounding piece is going to happen. Now, whether the final rule is that detention officers have to go into cell to actually tap heads may not happen, but I would just, I would, I would want you to go into it eyes wide open to say, it's more than likely going to happen, and we would be back to you in October looking for a recurring revenue stream to have those positions, because it would be a state unfunded mandate. I, I just don't want you to get into a situation where you think it's gonna go away. I don't think it's gonna go away. I think it's gonna get modified, but I still think you're gonna, you're gonna get stuck.
Well, it, it was four plus some equipment, maybe? Was that right, chief? It was broken down into, the employees were a hundred and sixty, and then there was forty for operation or?
Since we're, the other, as far as the operations go, since we're increasing one person per shift, and there's gonna be some expenses that are gonna go up when it comes to the equipment that they're gonna have, the uniforms and things like that, and that's what rounded out the number.
Okay, but I want, I want to comment on that. I'm gonna go back to what I said the other night. All that this proposal does, you still have to make two rounds per hour, which you have to do now. All it says is, instead of making a round at one fifty-one and making another round at one fifty-nine, there has to be thirty, they have to be made within thirty-five minutes of each other. The number of rounds hasn't been changed. It says in simple terms, now you gotta do your job. That's all it says. You don't need more people to do that.
You, you're better at math than, than make that statement, if you.
No, I'm not better at math than to make that statement.
You know, it's, there, there is gonna be an increase in the number of rounds that are gonna have to be done over a twenty-four-hour period.
How can that possibly be if you have to make two rounds every hour and there's twenty-four hours in a day? How can that be?
Because there are times where if you can make a round at the first minute of an hour, and you can still be in compliance if you make, if you finish the round at the last minute of the next hour. So you've almost got two full hours of time that have gone by, and you've made two rounds.
Charlie, you didn't take math the same place I did. I can count better than that.
It does, it says every hour. It doesn't say every sixty minutes. It says every hour. So if you have a round at the one o'clock hour, and then you've got a round at a two o'clock hour, then there could be almost two hours in between that. That's a matter of how many minutes are between those rounds.
No, it says the round, like, two rounds in one hour, they have to be made within thirty-five minutes of each other.
That's the new rule.
That's right. That's the new rule.
Yeah, so if you, if you go from making, if you go from making a round an hour to having a round every thirty-five minutes, there is a substantial difference in the way that it's worded on there. The information that the board has been provided is saying that the, we are, will not be in compliance with what the rules are if we switch to having to do a round every thirty-five minutes, as opposed to what we are, without adding an additional FTE per shift.
Well, you know, just look at the size of the jail. How long does it take to walk the corridors of the, of the jail and do your looks as you go through? You can do it in fifteen, twenty minutes.
You can do it in fifteen or twenty minutes if you're not performing what an actual round is, which is not walking a lap around the facility. It's going in and looking for things that need to be corrected, and then they're correcting them. So there are situations where if you do a round and you have to correct something, you may be working on that prob, that problem for thirty, forty-five minutes or an hour if you find something. But even if that happens, you're gonna have to do that, and then that next round is gonna have to start within that next thirty-five minutes by another person that is doing those rounds.
Well, how many people are there on a shift?
Right now, there's four people on a shift.
Right. Okay, we're gonna have more employees than we have people in the jail, is what it's gonna come down to. Now, you know, I count very well, and I, I will never vote to put another employee in that jail, because you're telling me that somebody that's strolling, walking the corridors for a round is gonna go into a cell to correct something by himself without going and getting another jailer. I don't believe that.
Those are your words.
I don't believe that. That is irresponsible. That's irresponsible to unlock a cell and go into a cell to correct something by yourself if you're, you're an officer in there. You shouldn't be doing that.
I, I agree with you, and that is why there's so much fighting about that round being done, that you don't have to go into the housing unit to put yourself in harm's way. Like everybody who works in the jail every minute of every day does. And you understand that, and you know that, and you know that the folks down there are doing their job and they're doing it well. It's just what you say is, is not that.
Yeah, you, you don't need another employee down there. It wasn't that many years ago that we only had three people doing this. It's been about, I don't know, don't hold me to this, seven or eight years ago, then we added the fourth person down there. We didn't have but three up until then. Then we added the fourth one to make it safer so they could do their job. Now, because of this change, you're wanting five people down there. That, with, and the average prisoner rate in there, and you and I disagree on this, but I, I count numbers too, one, two, three, four, five, is about fifty-seven people. And, and we've got five, you, you're wanting five jailers in there. I'm sorry, I don't go for it.
I don't think anybody's surprised about that.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Chairman, no, let me, Charlie, if you will. If the, if the state passes this unfunded mandate, what would the requirement be as far as implement at, at our jail?
From, from my understanding, that if everything passes, then December of two thousand and eighteen is when that rule will come into effect.
I would like to just put this aside and, and look at it in October. Or wait until it, until it passes and we're told that we have to do it. I don't see any reason to implement it right now, not knowing that it's gonna happen. Something could happen that, that, that don't prove it. Anything can happen. So I'd just like to see, put on hold until, till the state tells us, okay, this is what you gotta do.
You know, if you, if you want to do that, I, I think, if, if you're gonna do that, I think it'll be wise that you're gonna have to set that money aside.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, 'cause if, if not, I mean, you can't go back and, and, and change the tax rate or anything. So it, and so if it's not needed, then well, you just got this money sitting over here. But if you do need it, I mean, it is there. I think that's the only feasible way to do that.
Let me, let me ask you before you sit down. We had originally talked about two hundred thousand. If you have to do this in December, could we possibly trim it back from two hundred to maybe a hundred and fifty, considering the time element?
The, the conversation, and Charlie and I discussed a little bit, and the conversation I had with Lieutenant Brian was that that was doable, she felt like. It may bump your, during that implementation period, you may bump a little bit of overtime because of folks having to cover while you train people up. You know, obviously, we can't just walk out on the street and grab somebody and say, you're now a jailer, go to work. There's a, there's a ramp-up time, so, so, you know, from what I understand, and I think Charlie will agree with me, there's, there's an opportunity to, to take a little bit of that off.
I, I agree. The concern that I have moving forward on that is that it, it, once, once it starts, it's, it's on and it's on forever. You know, my concern is, is that if we wait too long, and it is gonna happen, that we've still got to recruit, we've got to hire, and we've got to train. Other than that, we're gonna have to use the pieces that we already have and just overtime them. And to a rate even more than what we already have to do to get the job done. So that's my concern, is if, if we shorten that window so much before implementation, then, then I, I want us to be in compliance. I want us to be in compliance from the first minute moving on. And I, that's my fear, is that we, if we don't look far enough forward, then we are not gonna be in compliance when it comes to that rule.
Read, reading the, some of the comments that are coming out of Raleigh from the state legislature, their criticisms are, is it all one hundred counties are understaffed in the jail? Was my conclusion after reading those, which I think is one of the reasons that this rule change is they're trying to make. change is they're trying to make sure that somebody's taking physical look at each one of these within a shorter time period.
I'll agree that statewide, that that is a major issue. I will say that in our facility, that if that rule change was not in effect, that four FTEs per shift was adequate for the facility that we have. But there is a big difference between what we have and what the change would be at that 35, and that would make it where we would have to, to, to increase that number. But if we had, if we had three like we did years ago, we would not be adequate for the job that we would need to do now.
Charlie, how long would it take you to put these officers in place once you were told that you have to do it?
Four is a tough number. You know, I would say that at any given time, we may have an opening or two in the jail. I would say that we could probably fill two or three positions within six months. You know, because we are looking for people that are specifically tuned in and can work successfully in a jail. We're not just looking for a warm body. So I think that, that six months to cover three of the four would be, would be probably reasonable. If we're lucky, then we can do those four. If we're not lucky, we could probably fill two of those within six months.
Saying that, so, so you're going to steal out of compliance if you can only fill two of them?
If, I mean, we're going to try everything that we can with what we've got to stay in compliance, but right now, if you look at, I mean, we go back and we watch surveillance tapes, right now with the rules that we have in place, you will see people that are in a dead sprint, trying to get through the facility to get the rounds and to get the fobs done, you know, through there, which isn't really going along with what the rounds are supposed to do. And then they're having, we're having to backfill with other people to get that, to get the round done.
Another point, I haven't read the bill or the regulation, is there a grace period? Now, if it come into effect, if it come into effect in December, they can't expect you to have full jails December. I mean, do they give you any grace period for filling those four positions?
I, I haven't read anything, and, and we're not talking about just a couple of rule changes for the jail. We're talking about everything that's under DHHS's umbrella is having changes. I haven't read anything, but just in my experience, there's only one place that you can get grace, and that's not the government.
Yes.
Charlie, in reading the document, it appears that there are 32 rules that are proposing, that are proposed for re-adoption. And these 32 rules alone, and probably many more of a lot of issues, like you said, under the DHHS statutes. These, these were substantial revisions for the operation, design, and construction of county person, county government-owned and operated jails and district jails. So it appears from this that, that there's a number of things that, that may impact county and district jails.
There are, and, and that goes back to...
This is only one small part of a large document.
14J is the statute that goes along with the confinement facilities, and that there hasn't been a major revision of 14J in almost 20 years. So they're trying to catch up on a lot of things, but the, the two that we brought before you are the two major things that, that are going to cover our changes that we need immediately.
And, and they also saying here, these, requiring these rules to be changed as necessary with a substantial public interest. And, and there's, there's definitions in here that talk about supervision rounds, which I find extremely interesting. An in-person check of inmates by an officer entering, walking through a cell block, day room, dormitory. So it's very specific on what, what you require.
Yes, sir, and that part is, is probably where the biggest fight is.
Yeah.
It's not the actual rounds, that's probably going to change, but the actual need to go into, you know, putting yourself in, in more harm's way by going in and putting yourself within hand's reach of each inmate where you don't have to go in there.
It says they watch rounds, means an in-person check of an inmate by an officer. Yeah, it's a very interesting document, probably written by people who have no idea what it's going to be. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Anita and Brian and Chief, is 150 uncomfortable? Or do you want to stay with the original 200?
I mean, unless Charlie has a strong objection, I think we were okay with the 150.
And in actuality, it's more, the, the FTEs at this point are more important, because, I mean, we're going to have lap salary that's going to develop over time, anyway, because there's going to be some buildup if, if it starts July 1 anyway. You know, so, so that, that is going to be, the FTEs are more important than the actual number at this point to me.
This don't have nothing to do with the ones that you need in advance. How many short, how many are you short right now?
We've got two openings in detention right now.
Two openings right now, and you're looking for four more.
We've...
And you need four more.
Yes, we've had, in the openings that we've had, we've been full, then we've been one short, then we get full, and then we'll get two. Right now, we've got two people that we're going to look to hire.
And probably the worst, worst thing you do is, is run the jail. I mean, it's hard for a jail to have to sit down in those conditions.
I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it any end of the hour.
But it's, it's always a turnover in your jail, isn't it? So this is just a rolling number anyway, isn't it?
Out of our divisions that we cover, detention has more turnover than anything.
So it's just a rolling number anyway, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's take a straw vote on the detention center line item of 150,000, that being four employees. All those in favor of the state mandated number? Okay? Those opposed? Okay. All right, the emergency services communication system update that's in the command trial, did I get it right? Carney?
That's a good one.
That number is 11,900.
What was that again for?
It patches multiple radio frequencies and types into, to one temporary communication channel.
Safety, security, it's a safety.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of that line item addition, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Carney, please don't come back.
All right, the last one I had was the tax assessor's card.
The what?
Tax assessor's card.
The appraiser, for the appraisers and the tax assessors. That request was 20,000. All those in favor, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. In favor of that addition, would you raise your right hand? Those opposed? Who is next?
Where we at right now?
Okay, let me, let me plug it in.
Two million.
I got 1.982, 1.982.
And that is, how many cent?
Four.
That is...
Four cents.
Almost three and a half cent on top of the five cent for continuation.
Jesus Christ.
What'd you say?
Well, the, the pay and classification implementation of the entire is two pennies. And the school resource officers is one penny. And we really don't have much choice on what we just did on the detention center.
That's just a small piece of that budget.
Okay, you, you know, we had, I think the thing you need to keep in mind is that on Tuesday night, we had a request for 4,959,000, which, that equates to 8.65 on the tax rate. 8.65.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Yes. Don't you, I thought, I thought I put a limit on the number you could add.
Let him go.
I am, go ahead.
Let him go.
God, I can't get a confidence. You know, we've been talking, almost every board meeting, we talk about kicking the can down the road, and we had a study done recently that looked at our, all the county-owned and maintained buildings. And what they looked at is, what they identified is building maintenance needs associated across over the next 20 years. And in, in this study, they estimated that over the next 20 years, including a 3% inflationary factor, inflation factor, total cost to maintain our buildings over the next 20 years is $28 million. Now, we could just not do anything, and just wait, and just keep maintaining, and I guess at one point in time, could even, if we don't fix certain things, we could buy rain hats and umbrellas and jackets for our employees when it rains. But the county manager and his budget recommended a one penny, one penny increase in tax rate, which equates to about $575,000 annually. At least it would be a start in a long-range plan to maintain our facilities. It would never reach the 28 million, but it would allow us to conduct repairs, there would be a fund there for repairs, and we wouldn't have to keep, like we did this year. I think we had to raise about $3 million, I think, in order for maintenance and repairs. So I would like the commissioners to consider establishing a maintenance fund for buildings and grounds in the county, so we at least have some money put aside to take care of some of the needs over the next 20 years.
How much are you talking about?
A penny, $575,000 annually, which is nowhere's near the 28 million. Probably bring maybe a penny. 573, 575,000.
A year.
A year, annually, to go into the special fund. They'll only be used for maintenance of buildings and grounds. Anybody want to add to that, Brian, on the study?
You know, again, I think that the board has tried to put in some plans that look long-term, which I certainly commend you for that. We have to take an opportunity to look beyond a couple of years out and try to look after our, our stuff. As I kind of think about that, there are also security needs that the school system has talked about, and we showed that as well. And if the board is so inclined to set aside funding for something like that, I think my suggestion may be to you to try to combine some of those, and, and if you took a one penny revenue stream and set it aside to say, use that funding to look after security needs first, and then use that remain, that, once you get those fixed and get those things done, both from the county side and the school side, then use that to work on your capital needs. I mean, they're, they're both strong needs, and we have a plan, and, and we're not fully funding that plan, but I don't know that you can fully fund it if you wanted to, but, but that would combine a couple of the things that may help you provide some. I mean, you, you said, you said that you want to put school resource officers at every school. If, if those schools are still, still extremely porous, then, you know, that might be difficult. I mean, you, you've got somebody there, but, but you've got other avenues that you could help with. So if, if you kind of combine those and said, let's look after, let's take that one dedicated revenue stream and look after those high priority, school security needs, county security needs, and then once they got finished, I mean, you're looking at what the school said and, and looking at their CIP, is about three and a half years of a penny would take care of that. Do you need to kick down the road county building issues for another three years? Probably not, but maybe you balance those two out and say you share those and...
So, so what you're saying then is, is, is don't look at this just for county building maintenance, but also look at this for possibly for, like, school security? And so that fund, the board can make a determination if they do decide to go down the road of putting a penny aside each year to use it for school security, use it for maintenance. Whatever the big, the largest need is in that given period of time.
Right. I mean, I think you've got to take a step, otherwise, you've got to take a step and you've got to say, this is a dedic, if you're going to do it, you, you need to do it sooner than later, and you need to dedicate it, just like you have other capital reserve funds that say, this is what this is only used for, so that it is a dedicated stream, revenue stream to that need, instead of having to come back every year and say, well, can we or can't we? No, maybe we can't, let's just kick it down the road. That way, you have a stream. You're obviously not doing it all, but you're doing, you're chipping away at it, which is what you have to do.
I could, I could live with that. That would change it then. Maybe combining for multiple needs, in this case, for school security, maintenance, depending on what the board, if we ever, if we went down this road and started dedicating the money, future boards can make those determinations.
Well, my, my thought is, I still would like to see the school budget reflect the cost for security and any updates in their budget. I think the whole purpose of the study and coming up with it was to make sure we had the funds available to do the county buildings. And that number, if I remember, I don't have it here in front of me, I think the total number was like a million four.
Ooh, Jesus.
So what, what we're going to do is if we do one penny, we're, we're not even halfway in what was recommended in the study. I think the proper thing to do long-term is to implement it closer. I'm not saying, you know, try to, try to have two, whatever pennies it is, to do what the study recommended, but I think it's making a mistake to go ahead and implement just one penny when we know it needs to be at least two pennies. I mean, that's, that solves most of the need too. I mean, a prime example is what we did last year. I mean, we've been kicking and putting it off, because what happens every year in the budget process is this building maintenance and repairs is what gets kicked. I mean, it's, it's that last thing in the game, in the priority list. And we really need to get that to the point where that's not a discussion item, that we're protecting the assets that we, that we built and we've got in our county. You know, when you look at the numbers that we've already got up to this point, I, you know, at some point, we've got to say, is there anything else that we really need to tackle? Because we've really tried to get, I think, the priority items tonight, being the pay and classification study as the number one item, and then the number two item was the resource officers. And here again, I'm one that, that's advocating that we use this one more time to keep the tax rate low and kick it one more year until we feel like we can do it right the first time. I'd rather see, I'd rather see us go ahead and do the pay and study and do that right the first time and kick this one at least one more year. My thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Anita, out of that 1.9 million dollars, how much of that is one-time expense?
86,900.
Well, the resource, resource officers, the estimated cost is $570,000.
What's the penny?
The annual cost is 330,000.
Yeah, that one does come, that one does come down 45,000.
That's more than $85,000.
That's first year. In the second year, you drop off, you drop off the car.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, is all these one-time expenses could come off next year, and we could use that to, use that fund into...
Hang on, we'll reboot it. Hang on just one second.
I see what you're saying. Take off the equipment.
I think that number was 45,000.
That's a total of 270, so we'll reboot that thing. Show that, show that is 300.
Yes, God knows, I need it cool.
I, I...
And then that way, we don't have to raise the tax anymore than what we've done.
Anita, while, while you do that, we're, we're going to take a five to 10-minute break.
Okay.
Anita, you want, you want to share your number that you came up with? Anita, you want, you want to share your number that you came up with?
Yes. So, what I have is there's been 1,982,819 added from expansion, but we wanted to look at what piece of that is considered recurring, where you'd need an additional recurring revenue to cover that every year from here forward, and what we would consider one-time. And so, of the SROs for the public schools, there is a one-time equipment piece of 270,000, and the rest of that, the 300,000 is a recurring salary and benefit piece. The campus police officer at the college, that's all recurring. P.S. Jones Alumni Park, that was a one-time contribution. Pantigga Museum, the 500, we had that as recurring.
What was that one again?
Pantigga Museum, 500.
You got that as recurring?
I should, I do. If I need to change that, I can. Open Door Community Center, 5,000 is a one-time only. Phase one and two of the pay plan would both be recurring. Those two total 1,107,454. Part-time position or contract labor for public works, maintenance and grounds, 50,000, that is one-time only next year. Tax assessor car at 20,000, that's one-time only. Hatching system for emergency management, one-time only at 11,900. And then the four detention officers we have at 150,000, that would be recurring. So, of the 1,982,819 that has been added, we can back out 361,900 that we could potentially use fund balance for because it's a one-time expenditures. That leaves the recurring piece, 1,620,919.
One of, what I was thinking, the reason I asked you that question, is that 361,000, we could take that money and put it in a fund for capital improvements, and then that way, we wouldn't have to raise, raise money for capital improvements.
It's recurring.
For that, for those one million, whatever it was, our, the capital improvements.
You're talking about the SROs, the one-time equipment piece?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you, if you do that, then you'd have to consider the full 570 as recurring.
Then, then you're, then you're moving, I, I thought, I thought what we were trying to do was to see what tax rate needed to be to provide the same services next year by pulling that act.
And that's what I did, but if I need to change that, I can.
Well, actually, that's, that's exactly what I meant, would be recurring, because say, next year, you wouldn't have to go up on the taxes to cover capital improvements. You could still use that 361,000 as, as capital improvement, and you wouldn't have to go by, have to go up on taxes next year.
Okay, so if we consider the 207, all of it as recurring, then...
That's not even a penny.
You're, you're looking...
It puts you at 63.3.
I mean, you might as well say 63 and a half cent.
63 and a half.
I think, you know, Ryan was saying that it would take a penny just to do what would have been proposed in the expansion. I mean, I, I, I think we need to consider this, this potential fund for repairs and maintenance on the building. We need to consider that next year, trying to implement it, just like we are the pay and salary, all in one time. And if there's no support to do that next year, it gets kicked again. But what, what you're saying is, is that if we, if we agreed to do all of this right now, then our tax rate would go up to 63 and a half cent this year, and that's what it would take next year to do the same, same budget, right?
That's right.
And you'd be providing 270,000 to that facility maintenance fund you spoke about.
I'm saying it's 63.
For a year.
And the study said, 1.4 million.
So, you'd be doing about 20% of what was recommended from the study.
Okay, let's, 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 let's bring this part to a close. Is there anything else that somebody wants to, to talk about to try to have a straw vote to see if we put anything else in this offer?
Is this what's going to be presented for the public hearing?
Well, we, we said that we would go back and address anything, that the first go-around was to try to get us to a number, so I think we would need some kind of a decision or a straw vote to see if this is what we want them to come back at our June 4 meeting. Because we said when we took the vote, you know, just like on the salary, you know, did we do all that in one year, or did we do it in two years? Because we, you know, we, we were looking at this COLA or one-time payment, and it was so close, that's why we went back and voted to, to do the pain study in one year. What's, what's the wishes? I mean, we're...
I think we've done enough.
We're, I mean, we're, we're pretty much at 63 cent, and we've addressed, we've addressed the two big items that we've been discussing for a number of months, because some of this goes back to when we first had our planning session.
Now, after the public hearing, and when we vote on the budget ordinance, we'll have an opportunity to present language to be inserted into the budget ordinance. Question mark.
Are you, you want to use an example hood?
Like what kind of language?
Any kind of language that I want to present.
You mean, you mean comments?
No, specifications to go into the budget ordinance.
If you could tell us what those are, we can work them into the budget ordinance.
I'd rather wait until we're voting on the ordinance and then make the motion, and you can vote them up or down.
Okay.
We've always done that. We've always been able to, right up until you vote on the ordinance, there are people who are making motions to change the budget.
Right.
The budget is the budget ordinance.
Right.
So, I'm talking about making changes in the text or proposed changes in the ordinance. You can do that right up until we vote on the ordinance.
Yes.
I guess I would just say, if you plan to do that, that's fine, but I can't give you a, I can't have a published document ready for you on the night you're supposed to adopt if you still plan to make changes.
You don't, you don't have to, because you've got until the 1st of July to, to actually produce the document. I mean, I don't think anybody expects the final ordinance to be presented on the night that we vote on it, because somebody may have a last-minute change. They always do.
Okay, does anybody, do you want to take a straw vote on this final number? Or you want to just say, bring it to us June the 4th?
Bring it to us.
Well, it is what it is. I mean, we looked at the most important things we thought in the expansion budget, and some of them passed, some of them didn't, so taking a straw vote on it, we ain't going to change it right now.
Okay. Well, if nobody objects, then you've got the numbers to move forward with?
I think we've got the numbers to move forward with to, to produce the draft ordinance for you based on these numbers for the general fund.
It's 63 cent tax increase.
Well, you say objects, objects in what way? I don't have a problem with going forward and presenting these numbers.
That's...
I don't approve of the numbers.
But you don't object to us...
No.
Giving them the directions to go ahead?
No, no.
All right. Now, we need to go into, you want to go into the water fund first?
That's fine.
Okay.
What page is that on?
Well, I mean, I, I think one of those is, well, there's only one thing in the water fund, and that's the, or actually, there's nothing in the water fund.
Right. It's a solid waste.
Because you're not going, you're not going to give the water fund to COLA if you didn't give the general fund to COLA. I wouldn't think, but you could if you wanted to. So, the only thing left is the, is a solid waste.
A lot are going to be treated alike.
So, solid waste.
And that's where I had my proposal for the, the study.
Any discussion on, on that? That was where we do an analysis of the, the sites and the total system, look at the tonnage and see what we need to do to try to update our, update our facilities.
As part of that, Brian, do it away with some of these sites that we have.
Well, no, no, the, it is giving you the information for you to make that decision if you wanted to.
Well, I understand that, but that, that's part of what you're going to bring to it.
I think there'd be some recommendations that would come back in that study that would say, this site is redundant of these sites, and it would be more economical and make more sense to combine two of these or one of these or whatever, and bring that back and say, here's, here's what you could do now if you did that, and you could still reach a certain level of service. And I think what we would do is we would come, initially, we'd come to the board and say, what level of service do you want to maintain? Do you want to have a 10-minute drive time to a convenience site? Do you want to have a 15-minute maximum drive time to a convenience site? Or do you want a five minute? So, with that criteria, then the consultant can look at that, determine where those optimal sites would be so that you have the appropriate minimum or maximum drive time.
What I'd like for you to look at, Brian, when you do this, and you and Christine decide what sites you may or may not do away with, is look at the upgrades at the Hawkins Beach facility. I get a lot of calls from, from older people about having to climb up them stairs and then throw their trash in above their head, and so if you can just take a look at that and see what it would cost to, to make that easier...
I think that that would be part of the entire study, to look at all the sites through, what would make them safe and most convenient. I think Commissioner Richardson said a convenient, convenient site.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But also, Mr. Chairman...
Well, I, right now, all we're doing is taking a straw vote on whether we do the study. We get into the study if we get it approved.
Right.
The budget process.
The cost, all we need to do is deal with the budget.
That's right.
The total cost, so how much money are you talking about?
Yeah.
I think about 50,000.
50,000, talk about trash.
How much is it? I forgot, how much was the study?
50,000.
50,000, talk about...
Rested by 50.
Talk about garbage. Trash is big business, well, you realize it, isn't it?
It is extremely big business.
Okay, let's take a straw vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay?
Yes.
Do you have anything else that we've got to talk about?
District tax.
You got, you have the information in front of you from the fire departments?
That's right.
That have requested, the north side has requested that you, that you adjust to make that a revenue, revenue neutral rate.
Those digits are so large in proportion to each other, you're talking about cutting it off at the nearest half cent or...
Half cent, yeah.
Okay.
That's where, that's where we've, that's where we traditionally have tried to stay as half penny.
Round up or round down?
Can we vote on this?
Or round up?
Okay, all right.
Can we vote on this tonight?
You can vote to allow them to produce the information to us that we're going to...
Well, it would be part of the budget ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, that number nay is not rounded off to the, to the half, isn't it? Like 2.9?
It's rounded to the quarter penny right now. They're at 3.75.
3.75.
Okay.
So, you're saying round it...
Revenue neutral for them is 4.1.
No, they want to go revenue, whatever.
I've got a question for you to answer. The same question I asked at our regular meeting, we haven't heard from everybody. Is there a reason why we hadn't heard from these three people yet? Do they don't care, they don't, yeah, yeah?
So, of our fire and EMS tax districts altogether, there's only four districts, four tax districts that can be adjusted. The other EMS districts are already at max.
Okay.
So, even though they're going to have a detriment for less of income, there's nothing else that can be done. There's no raising that can be done for them. So, the four tax districts, Richland's Fire and EMS district chose to hold the line, try to operate within. Also, Long Acre, which is Pintown EMS, and Broad Creek EMS decided to hold the line. So, when you say on the fire districts, the north side fire district is all of the fire departments on the north side.
Well, what do you have here? We haven't heard from the following departments.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just trying to put a fire before it dawn.
Yes, several of those departments get a, a minimum amount as it is proportioned to the north side, so it doesn't affect them. They're going to still get their minimum amount, everybody else's is going down.
Like a river gets the minimum.
That is correct. There's three departments, I believe, that get a flat fee unless the tax, unless the income were to get over a certain point, and it's not there.
Okay, so, so did you consult with anybody in these three?
Yes, we, we reached out to those departments in those three. Again, the...
I, I, I see what you're saying, but, but it's misleading here, we have not heard from them. We not have heard from the following departments, that's the...
Right, and, and we won't, we won't come before you on hearsay. So, if they did not send us an email that says this is our opinion...
So, they just asked us to do this?
Yes.
Got you, that's, that's all.
But all three of these are in the north side.
That's correct. That's every department on the north side of the river.
The Ponzer is a con, we have a contract with Ponzer. That's a fixed, fixed dollar amount.
I got you.
They have a small district in, in the county.
Yes.
Conny has, has these fire district people, have they gone out and talked to the people in, in their district about how they feel about raising taxes, or do you know that they have done that?
You know, that I could not tell you for sure. I'm sure there's been some conversation. Have they had community meetings? There's not been time for that, you know, just quite frankly.
Have you gone out and polled your people in your community about a tax rate?
I sure have.
But this is, this is a little bit different, though.
I, I know, I know.
I heard a lot of stuff.
But let me, let me make sure that's clear. There's a little bit of difference in this, though. This isn't an increase, this is to get it to revenue neutral.
This is to keep from being a decrease.
Right, it's to keep it from them, not, all things being equal, it's, it's neutral.
Giving our services for it, say.
Well, getting them roughly, and again, it's all looking on the total, not the individual granular piece, it's, it's as a whole. It's just take, just like the three cent that it requires the county's general fund to get back to revenue neutral. It's whatever these would be.
And, and it also allows them to continue to operate.
Correct.
Otherwise, they'll have shortfalls, who knows what happened? And I'd hate to see a volunteer fire department go out and we have to put a fire department in. That's going to cost us millions.
Did we, did we take a straw vote on this?
No.
We did not, okay. We need to take a straw vote in order for you to...
I'll take a straw vote.
Okay, all those in favor of being revenue neutral on the fire tax?
I'm for it.
We left anything out?
I don't think so.
All right. Are we down to the close?
Now, if you, if you vote for something on a straw vote, does that mandate you have to vote for something in the general discussion, or should we pass a motion?
No.
Because I know sometimes people vote to put stuff in and never vote for the budget.
You, you got to realize this is a workshop.
I know that.
No motions are binding. I thought I made that clear.
It's a private joke that I have.
I got you.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna have our next meeting on Monday, June the 4th at 5:30. That's going to be in the Superior Courtroom of the courthouse, and that's when we'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget.
And we'll have the proposed, we'll have the draft ordinance based on what we got tonight available, and it'll be in the document.
Make sure you bring everybody.
Okay. If there's no other thing housekeeping, then we'll, we'll adjourn. Somebody make, make, we adjourn.